He was coming back and mowing the freaking lawn.
Was he really?
Yeah, he had solar heat, he had, yep.
Harris, I think it's logged in, honey.
Hi, Josh.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad.
We had, we had quite, quite a few people at work with the same issue you had.
Oh, really? I, I felt bad, but I figured it was better just to be safe than sorry.
No, I agree with you. I, I totally agree. Better safe than sorry. Plus, as I said to Melissa, nobody can ever hear me when I'm actually there, so.
True.
Uh-oh. Ahem, that's not gonna work. You're down to a full blast. It worked.
So, fiance's car has a busted, uh, front bumper where they have, uh, Phil Blaney handle it.
What?
My fiance's car has a busted front bumper.
Oh.
We're gonna take it to Bill. Give him a little work.
Yeah.
Joe, Luigi? Luigi, you might wanna mute yourselves, okay?
Yep, I just wanted to make sure you guys could hear me first, and I will.
Not you, Mike. Luigi and Joe.
Okay, alright, you can hear me, that's good.
Whoever has a fiance with a busted front bumper.
Hey, folks, can you hear me? Yeah.
I can, yes.
Super. Can you see me?
Yes.
Alright.
Little bit of backlighting, but that, we'll, we'll accept that.
Thank you. Well, I apologize, we've moved and we are still surrounded by boxes. So I'm sitting in our downstairs bedroom, which is now our workout room. And I'm hoping you can't see all the boxes I'm surrounded by, so.
Nope, don't see any boxes, nope, that's good. But I don't see any decorations on the wall either.
No, no pictures are hung yet. A couple of weeks. How is everyone doing?
Very well, how about you?
Good. Looking forward to the holidays, although they'll be quiet. And I think folks are on mute.
We lost you there for a second.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna test mute, hang on. Okay, mute is working, that's good. So I will stay on mute until we get started.
We can see you, Jeff.
Hey.
Hey.
You, but you're not sitting at the table here. Josh is not at the table, and we were gonna send, uh, Marty to come pick you up, you know?
Well, that's okay, cuz you have Michael Harris, you have Josh Houghton, and you have, uh, you have, you have Elizabeth too here, so. Yep, Elizabeth is here.
Hiding, yeah, I see her, yeah.
You know, folks.
Hiding in the shadows.
Well, that bright light. Okay. Alright, I guess we're gonna, uh, we'll start the meeting. Is everybody in the audience? Is there people that are connected you can hear? So we're, I don't see too many, it's, how many people are connected on? Twelve? Okay, so we have, apparently like twelve people that have signed in. Hopefully this Zoom meeting will go fine for you. Again, my name is Jeff Schmidt, I'm the chairman of the town of Dwyansburg Planning Board. Like to welcome everyone to the November nineteenth meeting. Before we start the meeting, we'll just go over just a little bit of protocol. Part of the opening meetings is the ability of the public to make a statement concerning about anything that they would like to make a statement to the planning board about. It's so long as it's an item that's on the agenda, and all presentations will be limited to four minutes. We will ask you to state your name and address for the record. Okay, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to open up the, uh, planning board meeting for November nineteenth, twenty twenty. Yes.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Yes.
Lynn Bruning. One three.
Hold on, Lynn.
Eight, Dwyansburg Road. Chairman Schmidt and the planning board, please include.
Yes.
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 Okay, the first thing with the motion to open up the open forum. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Marty.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the open forum is now open, so we can start, anyone in the audience that wants to make a comment. Just follow the protocols we explained before. So go for it. Lynn there? Lynn, are you there? Give it another second, because I think Ms. Bruning was gonna offer something.
Yeah, I think she's on mute, she may not realize she's on mute.
Is, is everyone connected yet?
We can still hear you, yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now we can.
Yeah, yeah.
I apologize, I'm so sorry.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Dear Chairman Schmidt and the planning board, please include my statement on the official record of tonight's planning board minutes. It's found on the town website. For the clerk's convenience, I've emailed my statement to the clerk. Supporting documents for the November nineteenth, twenty twenty planning board agenda were not provided on the town website or with the draft agenda. This lack of information prevents the residents from fully understanding the projects under discussion. Failure to provide sketch plans, site plans, and other application documents prohibits residents from submitting informed and timely comments on our community development. This is especially important when the planning board is conducting public hearings such as tonight's case twenty twenty-one for a two-family dwelling at ninety-eight ninety-eight Western Turnpike. This lack of information and community involvement may lead to litigation. It is without question that the primary cause for the Biggs versus Eden Renewables, Richard Murray and Dwyansburg Planning Board case appellate division for Judicial Department was due to planning board and planning department's lack of transparency, accountability, and equitable distribution of planning board meeting minutes and Oak Hill Solar one and two application documents. I first learned of this proposed solar power plant on July eleventh, twenty nineteen from a one-page ZEREX notice for a public hearing. I visited the planning department to view application documents and was informed by the clerk that she wasn't sure if I was allowed to view the application folder. I informed her for the information, and she again denied me access to the documents. This restriction of public information should have been, could have been prevented by posting the application online. Online documents also provide clarity of the application record. The town submission to the court for Biggs versus Eden official record includes over one hundred pages for the March eleventh, twenty nineteen Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for the Land of Charles Roads on Alexander Road. This SWP P P is unrelated to Oak Hill Solar application. Additionally, the record curiously contains Nicerda documents signed by the town planner Dale Warner on October fourth, twenty nineteen, essentially changing Oak Hill Solar's project scope and scale to include ten megawatts of battery storage when the application approved resolution, site plan, and negative declaration do not mention or locate battery, battery energy storage at the project site. Other towns in New York assemble application information in Dropbox folders, allowing concerned citizens to access organized documents online at any time during the review process. For example, the town of Scohary, one seventeen Bliss Road Solar Power Plant submitted by Borrego. I've included the hot link for you. And town of Clifton Park, Hubs Road Solar Power Plant submitted by Access Solar, again, I have the hot link for you. And I'll post them in the chat for everybody else. Please provide planning board documents online for all citizens to review prior to public hearings and planning board meetings. During these extraordinary times, COVID-nineteen restrictions prevent citizens from reviewing documents at town hall. Online files are the best method to allow residents to be informed of the town's actions and be included in the decision-making process. If the town and planning boards are transparent, accountable, and equitable, the likelihood of litigation will be diminished. Thank you for your time and service to the citizens of Dwyansburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Does anybody else have any comments?
Dear Chairman Schmidt, please include my statement in the official record of tonight's planning board minutes as found on the town website. Solar one and two application documents contain numerous errors and omissions, including what most limited to one. The September nineteen twenty nineteen meeting minutes reflect that the town engineer Doug Cole of Prime Aviation said he reviewed the glare study and met all requirements of the local law in exhibit C. However, the application documents do not contain a glare study.
Yes.
In fact, the only reference to glare in our letters of concern from residents is found in the July ninth, twenty eighteen letter from Eden to the planning board indicating a submission of documents to the Federal Aviation Administration for aeronautical concerns, see exhibit B. Lynn Bruning's October twelfth, twenty nineteen Freedom of Information Request to the FAA provided, quote, "determination of no hazard to air navigation" for Oak Hill Solar confirming that Eden did not provide a glare study for the abiding parcels and roadways, see exhibit C.
We're having, we're having trouble, here you do, have to speak up to your mic.
Correspondence to the planning board reflects that the decommissioning fund, quote, "is reasonable for the proposed system," end quote, see exhibit D. Additionally, the September nineteen twenty nineteen meeting minutes reflect that, quote, "Doug also reviewed the decommissioning study, and in his professional judgment, the decommissioning study satisfies the requirements of the solar law and is reasonable in the amount of money," see exhibit A. September nine, twenty nineteen, Eden submitted a decommissioning plan to the town that includes a decommissioning summary chart on page four. This chart does not include the removal of ground screws and power poles. It does not include trucking for any debris off-site, see exhibit E. This is in conflict with Nicerda's guidelines as found on page five, which includes the removal of all ground screws, power poles, and provides trucking of debris. The town engineers recommend recommendation in the planning board's approval allowing Eden to leave an unspecified number of ground screws, power poles, transmission lines in position and permits all debris to be left on the site. Will the landowner be responsible for the cost of removal of the debris? Or will the town simply pass the expense on to the taxpayers? Three, Eden's application omits electrical diagrams for angle, for single line, three-line, and tracking panel drawings for the solar power plant. Specifications sheets for required electrical equipment, photovoltaic panels are not found in the application documents. Safety, noise, layout, and product quality of the electrical system and photovoltaic panels was not reviewed. Why didn't the planning board give the application a long, hard look? My September nineteen twenty nineteen letter to the planning board stated that the court has upheld the rulings that seeker agency should not defer analysis of the project's impact to professional or agencies. Bondor v. Town Board of Warren, twenty seventeen, see exhibit six, see exhibit F. Without a doubt, the planning board is ultimately responsible for the application's accuracy and completeness. It appears that the town engineer permitted numerous errors and overlooked omissions in Eden Renewables' application for Oak Hill Solar Power Plant. Residents notified the planning board of their concerns about the application's inadequacies for glare, decommissioning, electrical layout, and stormwater prevention. Why did the planning board fail to verify the application and protect the town even when residents submitted their multitude of concerns in writing? How will the town pay for potential damages to town roads and abiding parcels during the construction in a lifetime of the project?
Ma'am.
Will the town engineer be held accountable for his errors and omissions? I look forward to hearing your written response. Thank you, respectfully, Susan.
Okay, thank you. Keep in mind, these, these open forums are supposed to be four minutes maximum. It is not for a dissertation on, on, uh, review of former projects that can be done by letter. Okay, any other comments we have? Alright, hearing nothing, uh, I make a motion to close the open forum for tonight's meeting. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Michael.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next line of business on the agenda were our public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. It's application number twenty, here's twenty-one, Sparrow, Kagas. Sparrow in the audience?
You gotta unmute him.
Alright.
There you go, you should be unmuted now.
Yep.
Sparrow, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Alright, make a, a motion to open up your public hearing, and it's on your opportunity now to, uh, again, present your project in the context of a public hearing, and we'll take comments from the public if they're earning. Yes.
Marty.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
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 Okay, Sparrow, your floor.
Sparrow, what we're looking for is, is a presentation, similar to what you did last time, but this time you're addressing the public rather than the board.
Okay, um, I actually, uh, which? Are we talking about the second dwelling, or are we talking about the proposal for the, uh, storage?
It's only for the second dwelling.
Only for the second one.
Yeah.
Okay. So I am looking to do, uh, the second dwelling on ninety-eight ninety-eight Western Turnpike for an in-law apartment. And, um, that's it. I don't know how much, what more you'd like me to say here.
Just describe the location, uh, you mentioned the, the car wash is behind there, uh, you can mention it's an existing, existing. Uh, you can mention it's an existing, existing shed, right, or existing building that's being converted into an apartment. Just gotta give the story.
Yeah. So, um, it is actually behind the car wash, and it was an existing shed and barn, which I am converting to a, uh, one-bedroom in-law apartment. And that is behind the car wash.
A shared driveway.
Yes.
And connecting, connected.
Shared driveway.
Connecting to the same septic system.
Yes.
It's not attached to the existing house, correct?
Correct.
Well, therefore, I would not call it an in-law apartment. I'd call it a second house.
Okay. Second, yeah, we could do that.
But it's only really.
A second dwelling, yes.
Is there a separate electrical service for that unit? Or is it?
It's, yes, there's a separate electrical service.
Yeah.
It'll be attached to the house, though, coming off the other house.
But it is, the elec- well, it's, it's separate, but it, it will be coming on one bell.
Yeah.
To the, to the, to the main dwelling.
So you have a, a single feeder, or do you have?
Yes, a si- single.
Same well, same septic, same one. So, yeah, all the.
And the same well is the home?
Yes, correct. Shared well, and I have reserve tanks inside the dwelling there, uh, four hundred gallons.
How many bedrooms is the existing house?
Three bedroom.
And how many are you gonna add?
One.
Will be four bedrooms.
Yep, four bedrooms.
How old is your existing septic system?
I believe the existing septic system is nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-four.
Raise bed?
The leach fields, uh, the leach fields, uh, on the septic system can support the three baths.
You guys should have.
That information should be already been submitted.
Melissa, is, is Dale there?
No.
Okay.
I've already worked with Dale with all that, and submitted that information to him from prior to.
Yeah. This is the public hearing. Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions, comments, Sparrow?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. I live across the street from the property in question. I was just curious what your plans were, Sparrow. Um, just knowing that the car wash is in front and you have the house in the back, I didn't know what the plan was. You're saying this is planned for something to be built on an existing barn shed structure of the property?
The structure's already been existing.
Yeah, but it's, it's next to the house somewhere towards the back of the property.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
It's somewhere.
Can you identify yourself by name and address, please, Sparrow?
I'm sorry, this is Laura Baylog. I live across Route twenty at one triple zero seven Western Turnpike. Can you hear me?
Yes.
To the property of the car wash, Sparrow's property. So I was just curious, because I, you know, I go by the car wash all the time and, and, you know, with the traffic in and out from there. So I wasn't sure if the plan was to add on to the main house or a different property, or if it was even gonna be a whole total separate building. But you've answered, you know, any questions I had by your explanation of it, so.
Yeah, it's completely separate building that's there. That's been there.
But it's towards the back. It's not near the front of the property.
No, correct.
Room with the car wash and the pond there, or anything?
No, no, it's, it's, it's in the back, and it's, and it's a, it's a separate building that's in there.
Okay, so it's like an in-law apartment, like for family or to rent out, or?
It's, it, yeah, for family. It's, it's, it's just, it's just a one-bedroom.
Okay, all right, that's whatever. Share. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Sparrow, uh, this is Jeff Schmidt. Do, do you know what the design criteria for that septic system was typically are based on the number of bedrooms that would be contributing to it?
Correct.
It was three bedrooms, that's one thing. Now you're adding another bedroom, which would mean the septic system by the book is not designed properly, and it would need to be expanded. Do you have any documentation, engineering plans?
Yep. Uh, the engine, the engineering plans have been submitted over there with paperwork that I gave to Dale, and I had showed him. And it supports, uh, three bathrooms and, and four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms, okay.
Correct.
It's bedrooms that we care about, the bathroom.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Comments from the board members?
Just a, a question. Last time there, and what we started talking about is the RV law is, I know that's part, not part of this public hearing, but is that, is that still part of this? Or a, a part of the separate application has that been withdrawn? Or should we talk about these comprehensively?
Wow. Um, actually, I'm actually gonna be foregoing the RV storage, and I'm just gonna be, uh, just doing the accessory parking over there.
Okay, all right, thank you. And so you're gonna revise that application and come back in front of the, the board for if you need anything else?
Yeah. I, I like, yeah, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm just gonna be foregoing the, the storage and just moving forward with, uh, accessory parking. And, uh, I'm gonna leave it at that for right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the project. I'll second that. Yes. Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
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 Okay, Elizabeth, on your.
This was a seeker type-two action, so no further seeker action is required.
Okay, great, great. Okay, absent any other comments from the board, I'm gonna make a motion to approve Sparrow Cagas' proposal for the additional dwelling, additional apartment, in-law apartment on that property, in accordance with the drawings he gave us. It's a, actually, it's a separate building, it would be a separate building, but being an in-law apartment, like situations that there's utility. But my feeling is that we could approve that, make a motion to approve it. Yes. 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 Yes.
Is that Michael?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Okay. But you're, you're good to go, Sparrow. Come and say Dale, get your, your building permits, and we could, good to go from there.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to old business, the Heisman Resubdivision is on in the old business category. I think we were waiting for, we were waiting for the, the parts and recreation, first preservation letter, which we do have, dated October sixteen. They've identified that they have no concerns with the proposed subdivision. If there were construction of houses or other structures, it could be potential investment in housing, but currently there's no proposal for that. And now that we have that, Joe around?
Yes, I'm on.
Oh, you're on, all right, Joe. We didn't make you wait till the end. I think the last time. What's the, could you just give us a, you know, another update on what's going on there?
Yeah, it's just, uh, we're adding one lot for John Heisman. That lot would be four point, uh, six-five acres. And then we're adjusting, um, the lot lines between the Denny's and the, the other Heismans. So it's just an addition of one lot. Uh, there is a sewer line there that will connect to the sewer, and then we'll have to drill a well. Uh, there's also an existing driveway there of sorts to a field, and they'll be using that to, for their access. Yeah, part of it is in the Hamlet, uh, Residence, so that's why we had to go to Chippewa, but it indicated there, they have no concerns regarding the subdivision at this point. So I think what we're looking for is to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay, it, uh, the members of the board are okay with it, Elizabeth, you on? I think we have everything that we need to proceed to our public hearing. I think, uh, we were, we're waiting for this letter, which we didn't have at our last meeting.
It came in the day after your last meeting.
Yeah. So.
Sure, so Jeff, I can make a motion.
Yes.
To issue a preliminary neg deck.
Okay, great.
And I will read that as the lead agency, the town of Duane'sburg, has determined this is a type-one action. The town of Duane'sburg Planning Board has completed an environmental assessment of the proposed Heisman-Denny Lot Line Adjustment and Subdivision. The project proposes to adjust the lot line to maintain the size of Lot Two, and then subdivide Lot One into two separate parcels. The proposal is consistent with the town comprehensive plan and complies with the town zoning ordinance. It is not located in a critical environmental area, is not in a hundred-year flood plain, is not a remediation site, has no known regulated wetlands, and is not an archaeologically sensitive area. The project has been identified as having threatened and endangered species, specifically the northern long-eared bat, to avoid and minimize potential harm.
Teleconference.
Can folks hear me?
Yes.
I'll continue. To repeat, to avoid and minimize potential harm to the bats, all tree removal activities must occur between October thirty-first and March thirty-fourth. In addition, the project area does not have any historic resources listed on or eligible for the state or national register of historic places. The project is adjacent to the Quaker Street Historic District, but it is not anticipated the project will have any adverse impact on the historic district, given no construction is being planned at this time. In accordance with the State Historic Preservation Office Letter of October sixteenth, twenty-twenty, should construction be planned, coordination will be required with the State Historic Preservation Office prior to any construction activities occurring. There is potential for federal wetlands to be present in the project area. The project does not propose any construction at this time. Again, however, any potential future construction in or adjacent to wet areas will require consultation and approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Any potential future construction will require the use of temporary soil erosion control measures to prevent stormwater pollution. If more than one acre of disturbance will occur, a stormwater pollution prevention plan will be required pursuant to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's requirements. Based on this information, the planning board has determined the proposed lot line adjustment and minor subdivision will not result in any potentially significant adverse environmental impacts, and a negative declaration is made for the purposes of Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law. And I will make that motion as our preliminary negative declaration.
And I'll second that. Thank you for reading that. I'm sorry for the echo.
No problem, thank you.
Liz?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
See you, see you in, in December.
In a month.
Hopefully for the last time, after this project, but, uh, it's like. Okay, moving on, the next agenda item is new business. Uh, we have a proposal for Stephanie Dixon seeks a special use permit. Is Stephanie around?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay, uh, could you describe to the board and public your proposal?
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Stephanie. This is Mark Brown. He's gonna, uh, help me talk.
And I will make that motion as our preliminary negative declaration.
And I'll second that, thank you for reading that, I'm sorry for the echo.
No problem, thank you. Yes.
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 Okay, with that taken care of, I'm going to make a motion to schedule the public hearing. For our next meeting, which would be. Do we have a date for that?
Seventeen?
December 17th, okay, a motion is to the public hearing. For December 17th.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Okay, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
See you in December.
In a month.
Hopefully for the last time, not for this project, but it's like. Okay, moving on, the next agenda item is new business. We have a proposal for Stephanie Dixon. Seeks a special use permit, is Stephanie around?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay, could you describe to the board and public your proposal?
Absolutely, hi, I'm Stephanie, this is Mark Brown, he's gonna help me talk it through.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Board members, Stephanie applied for a special use permit. To install a modular home on two and half surveyed acres at 6404 Duaneburg. She's filed a building permit application. And she told that the two pieces that she needed to complete. Project permit. And that was foundation plan which was submitted in the packet. And also the special use permit, which is what we're here doing tonight. So the home will have underground two for the amp server. Gravel driveway. A connection to town store. And a full building. If it's under a build well, it's a single family home on one floor. In the packet, there's a sketch drawing of the house as a tip within all the setbacks are required by the town. Also, there are a number of questions, Melissa was kind enough to provide us a packet for this meeting. Which had a number of questions indicated on it. And that answers to those questions is in your packet as well.
Well, there are any clues that the board has to be the answer at this time?
It wasn't C1, right?
One, yeah.
There's a question on the side setbacks. The drawing said it looks like 20 feet, I thought they were quite on 40.
The setbacks are 42 feet.
Forty two feet, it's a point, corner there. You got this one?
Yeah, forty two feet.
Yeah.
There we go. Closest to the west of the property line is 40 two feet.
Oh, okay.
Here. Question, is this the lot we approved for that drilling company? You know where they were going, horizontal drilling company was coming with, I'm not sure.
Wasn't that, wasn't that two down? For the two west?
I believe this is closer towards the dentist, right? Is this between the two existing homes?
Exactly.
Okay.
Between the two, two stories, okay.
It's an open here lot.
That's the log cabin? Yeah. And then. Up north of the grass. Two story houses.
Yeah.
Between them.
Yeah.
You, you can see the former police station. Down here. With the circular road.
Right now, see. That's just a, that's just above Jeff's property right here. Farther than that, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a lot past his.
If it's between the two two stories, it's a problem.
Melissa. Can you, can you turn it up, we're having trouble hearing the board.
Just trying to figure out.
We'll have to speak up for you, we were mumbling amongst ourselves.
Marty was mumbling.
Still trying to locate the lot exactly, and I live on it right down the road.
But you can see it up on the screen there.
Yes.
It's a good illustration up on the screen. You can see that part of the existing driveway there.
Okay.
And this is, this is zone, it's C2. C1.
One.
So across the street on that large lot, just, just so Stephanie understands what kinds of things could go in there. Just so you understand, you're buying in a commercial area and across the street, a commercial property could go in there, so.
Yes.
What could go in there Theresa, maybe help, help me with that? What, what are you going to C1 without too much? Regulations?
Well, you can put in any kind of retail business or garage, that kind of thing. If you look at the list allowed at C1 in the zoning code. Just give me a second to page to it.
Sorry, I put you on the spot because I don't have my zoning code in front of me.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mike, good point.
That was a good point, very good point.
Now, we, you guys used to always do a good job pointing this out to people, so I think it's a good practice.
And your, your future neighbors have, went through the same process and they understand where they built, we just want to make sure you understand what it is to be in a C1 area.
Yeah, like you can have a. Ding, a barber shop. Firehouse, a funeral home. A library, a hotel, a motel. A restaurant. A theater, and then there's a whole lot of places permitted by special use permit. Like this one, like motor vehicle sales. Shopping center. And facility, so that it's a pretty long list of stuff that could be across the road from you.
Understood.
Now, we, we assumed obviously the potential for commercial construction across the street, but this is intended to be far off from other homes, so we're okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we'd just like to make sure that you're kind of aware of the, you know, the implications of the, the general area and the zoning, you know, what could happen, somebody could build something across the street, they come to the board, we would. Be obligated to approve it if it was in the C1 and you might think, my God, they can't build that across my house, so. As long as you know the, the ground rules, you're.
Right, I'm going to do that. Okay.
And Stephanie, just make sure they put the best. Shingles you can get on that house.
Everybody knows me that.
Wendy's spot.
That one two story, I think they replaced them two or three times, but the dentist office has a few missing.
For the standing scene roof fund.
Welcome, but beware.
Right during the snow.
Folks, you made our night, I have no idea.
Okay.
So what else do we have to do for this application?
It's a type two application, so you can just set the public hearing if you want to.
It needs a public hearing?
Yes, it does.
Right, no secret review is necessary.
Okay.
Okay. Mike, how about a motion for us?
Yeah, unless anybody else has any further questions, I'll set the, put a motion forward to set the public hearing for December 17th.
I could second that.
Yes.
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 Okay, so Stephanie, we'll see you back here December 17th. We'll have a public hearing, you know, so long as there's not any outrageous comments or something that we didn't anticipate that comes up in the meantime. Looks like, you know. We can get through this process for you, but. We have to have the public hearing, let's people comment. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the last item on tonight's agenda. Under new business. Yes, yeah. Okay. For Paul Giemetti, apparently there's nothing been submitted to us.
Just a map.
Just a map, but they never got back to you.
Okay, okay, so we'll table the Giemetti on his new business, so we hear from him. And. The next item would be approval of the minutes. For the October 15th planning board meeting.
We're not going to be done in under an hour, this is not right.
This is good, this is good. Anybody have any comments on the minutes from the 15th of October? Marty's not a type.
Not to pick on our great secretary. Well, you're going to pay for this one. No, no, it's, it's a. Their edition, they got for they edition, so it's under Sparrow Cagas, 2021. Where it reads, there's a shared access property through the grabber, but a code enforcement has been up there. And the septic system is adequate for they edition. Oops. That's such a terrible thing, well, twenty last, no dessert, no dessert. Other than that, I couldn't see anything. And I'm by far an Englishman, not happening. Right.
There are no comments from anyone, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Marty. For the October 15th planning board meeting. Yes.
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 Abstain?
There is one other item, says comprehensive plan, is anybody kind of?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me address that for you.
Okay, okay.
All right. The comprehensive plan in the draft has been under review by the town board.
Excuse me, Theresa, sorry, just mute, mute yourself again, please, Melissa, then she won't have the echo to talk through.
Okay, that's so much better, thank you, Mike, okay. So the town board has been reviewing the draft comprehensive plan just before it gets released to make sure that. The town board's comfortable with all the provisions of the comp plan. Where they're still, still looking at one of the provisions of it. And so tonight, we will not be in front of you for the purpose of setting a public hearing on the comp plan. There's a specific procedure under New York town law for the review of comprehensive plan updates. And that involves having a public hearing in front of the special board. That was charged with doing the comprehensive planning, and that was the planning board. So once, once everything's ready to go, it'll be posted on the town website. And will be in front of you probably in December. Asking you to put it on for a public hearing in January. After that public hearing in front of the planning board, they'll be, you, you guys will evaluate whether there need to be any more changes. Then you refer it to the town board and the town board has a second public hearing. On the comprehensive plan update, so it's a very deliberative process. I thought we were going to be ready to post it on the website and move forward with the public hearing in December. Considering everything that's going on, it is perhaps better that we be pushing it off a little bit regardless, so. There's no deadline for doing these things, it's just. It's just something that's been in the works for a while and I know the town board wants to move it forward. And is very appreciative of all the time you guys have spent on it, as well as the former chair. Phil Sexton, so. So that's where we are, so stay tuned for December. And if you have any questions, otherwise let me know. If you have a second, I want to let you know that the Eden Renewables case is still in front of the appellate division third department. So the judges are reviewing the record and they're going to rule on the article 78 proceeding. The procedure followed by the board in approving the Eden Renewable Facility was followed. In the approval of the two preceding. Two preceding solar panel projects, one of which was built and one of which was abandoned. The board hired an independent engineer who is a professional engineer, who is licensed by the state of New York. And who gave you his professional opinion on the adequacy of the application. This is something that we do for any major application, just like we did for the Stewarts. The other thing is, not only did the board have several public hearings on the project. The board reviewed the project for a period of at least a year and a half and it perhaps two years. You spent a lot of time explaining to the applicant what requirement, what the requirements were of the town board. Town law, forgive me. And in addition to that, there was a site visit before the planning board made a decision. Which the planning board does not have to do, but which both Phil Sexton and Jeff Schmidt, who's currently the chair. Gave the property owners the courtesy of walking the land with them. So every comment, every concern that was raised in the public hearings was addressed before the board made its decision. The battery storage is shown on the plans that were approved by the planning board there. Along with the inverters that are shown on the electrical drawings and the engineered drawings for the facility. Melissa has bent over backwards to provide every piece of information. And every document, and on several occasions she has done this. The town, for a small rural town, does a wonderful job in getting agendas and minutes up on its website. And particularly in this time of COVID, when you guys are not meeting. Where everybody can come and see you, other than through the medium of the internet. We have also been very careful to still make documents available to people in a timely fashion. All public, all projects that are required to have a public hearing have a public hearing. Their notice is put in the newspaper as is required by state law. In addition to that, the, the town law provides for notice going to neighbors who are the ones most likely affected. To give them an opportunity. To see what's going on. So I just, I just want to say that the board really has done its job, you've done a great job. And, you know, the town board is in the process, as you know, of looking at the solar law and seeing if it can be tightened up. And so that's, that's really within their purview. The planning board applies the law as the law exists. And, and that's your job and you guys do a great job at it. So I just wanted to say that. When, when the decision comes down. It's up to the judges at this point and we'll hear what they have to say.
Thank you Theresa for those comments, I just had a question on the comprehensive plan discussion. Have there any revisions to it that we need to review before we have a public hearing, so we know what the latest and greatest is?
Yes, and you will have ample time to do that because. You, you'll set the public hearing at one month's meeting. And then you'll have the public hearing at the next month's meeting, so you'll, you'll have plenty of time to take a look at it. And having been involved since the beginning, the, the changes that the town board has made are really just sort of. Providing more detail as to directions in which they might want to go on particular things.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thank you Theresa, that was a good explanation of some of the procedural stuff. At this point, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, because I think we're done for this evening. Yes.
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 Marty?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you everyone, and have a safe holiday and.
Well, I just want to give a little reminder Jeff, that Bill always had a nice. Well, I, I just want to give a little reminder, Jeff, that Bill always had a nice holiday celebration with some sort of, something to celebrate with after meetings as, as chair.
Can't do that now.
Individual service, perhaps?
There's a special brew there, but, uh, well, we'll have to figure out something. We can each have a drink by Zoom.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you too.
Take care, all.
Bye.